Going to call to order the full board meeting of the Board of Trustees, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And as I've done since July of last year, we've asked either a student group or a student to come lead us in the National Anthem to open the meeting. Couple of reasons why. Number one, because we're all proud Americans. And number two, because we need, I think it's important that we constantly remind ourselves of actually why we're here. And that is to support our excellent students. So I would ask everybody to stand and let's thank Sonya Shaw, who is a Senior Morehead Kane Scholar from Wilmington. She is a music and neuroscience major. And I did ask her before, I said, so when you're learning, when you're taking anatomy from Chancellor Guswitz, do you put the bones in a song? She said, absolutely. So Ms. Shaw, the floor is yours.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the luck is regal, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And good luck in both your music endeavors and with your neuroscience. I know, I know we're gonna hear great things about you. All right, this time I'll call on Trustee Turner for the roll call. Secretary Turner?
Mrs. Otters-Neal?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Cottis?
Here.
Mr. McCullen?
Mr. Meekins?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
I am President, Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Secretary Turner.
As Chair of the Board of Trustees, it's my responsibility to remind all members of the Board their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by the Act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Anybody know of any kind of conflict? Okay, hearing none, I'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Having already read the materials listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be removed to the discussion portion of either the open or closed session in the opinion of any of the trustees? If you would, just take a quick look at that. All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion from Secretary Patel and a second from, I mean, from Trustee Patel and a second from Trustee Davis. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is passed. Next item on our agenda is revisions to the bylaws. These revisions are, were at the request of the Board of Governors. Our faithful and true Board Attorney, Ms. Pratt, if, would you mind just giving a brief summary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, trustees. These proposed revisions are in your materials. They are largely technical edits to bring the bylaws up to date with our prior practices. There is one edit that was requested by the Board of Governors Chair of all institutions in the system, and that requires in-person trustee attendance at board meetings. That is only for regular session, full board meetings. So that's a change to our bylaws. You can still attend remotely for committee meetings, emergency or special meetings, but if you want to vote, the request is that we change our bylaws to say you have to be here in person. So that change is on 2.04A, the red line. I'm happy to talk about any of the other changes if you have questions.
Has everybody on the Board had an opportunity to review those changes? It was in the material ahead of the Board. Trustee Cottis, yes, sir?
If this is passed right now, does that affect today's meeting or no?
It does not affect today. And in the future, you could attend a full board meeting by phone anytime, but just for purposes of a quorum and for voting, that, that wouldn't count.
Trustee Meekins?
Page four at the top, it says, any matter, this is for a special emergency meeting, says, any matter of business may be considered at a special meeting. Is that new? Is that a change?
That is not a change. So we switched A and B into separate sections now. So we have a section for special meetings and a section for emergency meetings. And the change is to accommodate some addition, other changes, but that language just got moved up. So in an emergency meeting, you can only connect, consider business connected with the emergency. That has been in there all along. And then at a special meeting, you can consider any business. So we just, we just delineated it into two paragraphs.
It's a fine distinction, I think, but if it's a special meeting, a trustee can bring something to the agenda. It would have to have a motion and a second. But if the, if, if an emergency meeting is called, only the matter related to that emergency can be discussed.
Is that the way it's always been?
Yes.
It has. I think we called an emergency meeting, for example, to hire Coach Davis.
Right.
And that was the only thing that was discussed, discussed or could have been discussed at the time.
Trustee Meekins, I can point you to, if you're looking at the new B in that section.
Right.
Do you see where the green lines are?
I do.
Right after that, you see the blue that's been struck. Any matter of business may be considered at a special meeting.
Right.
That's just been moved up.
Makes sense.
Yep. So it's, it's always been there, it's just been changed.
Great. Any other questions for Attorney Pratt? All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revisions of the bylaws?
Absolutely.
Have a motion from Trustee Davis. Do I have a second to that motion?
Certainly.
Have a second from Trustee McCullen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm gonna be very brief, because I really would like folks to be able to maybe get along with their day with the impending weather. But I do want to say good morning and welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting for September of 2022. Please, today, let's think of the citizens in Florida and our alumni who are in Florida who experienced the full wrath of Hurricane Ian. We, in North Carolina, those of us who live here have been through that, and we know what they're going through and support any needs that they may have. And while we're at it, let's take a few seconds and appreciate where we are. Appreciate Carolina. As Thomas Wolfe once said, "So far from forgetting the best blessed place, I think my picture of it grows clearer every year. It was as close to magic as I've ever been." UNC is, remains a top 30 university in the United States, the first public university ranked as the number five public in the nation by U.S. News and World Report, and clearly the best value university in all metrics. And let's face it, the best educational value probably on the planet. We're able to, we were able to attend yesterday and take part in the groundbreaking of the new addition to the Kenan Flagler Business School. We've also just completed, thank you Vice Minister Ruth, or in the process of completing the most successful fundraising campaign year, not just probably in UNC's history, but I would, I would hesitate and, but, but I would probably say it's probably in the history of any public university. Thank you for that and, and your entire team. And thank the alumni and donors who make that happen. For the past day and a half, I've met with each of the new deans that were brought to this university and have welcomed them on behalf of the Board to the Carolina family. These new Tar Heels are influential leaders in their respective fields. They have earned the admiration and respect of their colleagues at other well-regarded institutions and here at Carolina. Their credentials, combined with their passion for teaching, learning, along with solid work ethic, will ensure, among other things, that the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill will continue to produce high caliber graduates who will have lasting impact on the world around us. The hiring of these deans was approved by this Board of Trustees. The, the work done to search, recruit, and hire those campus leaders may well be one of the most influential pieces of work we have done together as a team, not only a Board, but the administration, the faculty, staff, and stakeholders at this university. We've already begun the work to find the right dean of the school of government to replace retiring Dean Mike Smith, and we've started the process to find a new dean in the business school. Yet our work has not only been focused on this campus and those who matriculate here, but we've also made significant and lasting investments off-campus. I would point to Innovate Carolina as, as an on-campus, off-campus collaboration. And we are taking our mission directly to the people of North Carolina. You can look no further at the, than, than at the Carolina Community Academy. Thank you, Trustee White, who's by phone, for your leadership on that Board and, and leadership as a representative of the Board. We recently opened that school in Person County. I was honored to be there with Chancellor, Chancellor Guswitz, and Trustee White. This school, within a school, will provide students an extraordinary education that fully leverages cross-campus curriculum, resources from a variety of Carolina programs, including the schools of dentistry, education, nursing, pediatrics, medicine, and social work. This is Carolina at work within our state and on behalf of the people that we serve. All of this work was made possible in part through the countless hours each one of you Board members here has spent in service to the university. I want to thank you as Chair of the Board for your service to this university and for all you do. We have and will continue to meaningfully advance the mission of this institution, and that is what I look forward to as we move forward through the fall and into the new year. We have important work ahead of us today, and as always, I thank you for your continued commitment. I thank the, our world-class faculty for what they do every day, teaching students. Thank the students as well for wanting to come to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and continue our tradition of making this the greatest place to obtain an education on the planet. With that, I will move and hand over the, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Van, the Student Body President, for remarks. President Van?
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna speak to you about issues affecting the grad student constituency, as well as the undergrad, and then some issues that relate directly to the student body overall. Theodore Nohler, the President of the Graduate and Professional Student Government, was here yesterday and got to talk to everybody a little bit about stipends and how those are affecting grad students. I think that he gave really helpful remarks. I know that we've been talking a lot about where to find alternative funding sources. People talked at the beginning of the year about potentially seeing tuition increases somewhere, maybe those could be used to help with grad student stipends. I feel comfortable saying that, like, that's maybe not a probable thing that's gonna happen. And so I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to figure out where to find extra resources for them, because currently they don't have the resources to meet their basic living needs. We have grad students who live 45 minutes, an hour away from campus, because they can only afford to live that far away with the cost of living in Chapel Hill being so high. These students are like a lifeline in the classroom. Undergrads rely on them every single day, and they're literally poor and just struggling to be able to exist in this university that they've chosen. And so the position of our administration is that we agree that it pays to be the best, and we are the best as a university, we see those gains. But our position is that it costs to be the best too, and so we should be pouring those resources into our grad students as best we can to make sure they can be here. In that same vein, grad students are needing significantly more support in the areas of professional development and career services, both in individual coaching and in terms of robust networking events. I think we have a lot of those opportunities for undergrads, and a lot of those kind of get funded through the union and the Carolina Union Board, but we don't see grad students in those spaces, because so many of them are in a specific school, and so all their resources, all the events they go to are in that one space. They're just needing more support in that sense. And so any resources or guidance, counsel that this Board can offer as we work on those things is always appreciated. The issue of water on campus is something that I know we're talking with a lot of students about. They're really concerned just about what's going on, and I think for grad students specifically, again, being in a singular building for the majority of the day, for the majority of your work, if that building doesn't have safe water, or water's being shut off in that building temporarily, making sure that we're focused on how to take care of and accommodate those students as we navigate these issues. And so I wanted to bring that to the forefront of this Board's mind today. The undergraduate student government is leading an effort right now to educate students about ALE and promote transparency while reinforcing the rights of students through education and discussing accountability measures for different policing bodies in Chapel Hill. We've found is that a lot of students don't know the difference between Chapel Hill PD, UNC PD, or ALE, and don't really know what their rights are when engaging with any of these bodies. And we want to work really hard to establish healthy relations with all these departments over the course of the year so our students can be safe. Our Office of State and External Affairs is working on a centralized angel shot program for Franklin Street. I know we talked a little bit today about safety in that space. Our chief gave a really wonderful presentation. I know that angel shot programming is something that different businesses on Franklin have. If anybody's unfamiliar with that, you might be at Might As Well Bar and Grill on Franklin and go to the restroom and in the bathroom, like, there's like flyers on the stalls that will tell you, if you need help, you can go to the bartender and order an angel shot. And you can order it with specific things, like, can I get an angel shot with a little bit of this, or whatever the messages are, and the bartenders know what that message is saying. It may be, I need you to get me a ride, or I'm in immediate danger, please call the police, or whatever those things are. And our administration thinks it makes sense for Franklin Street as a whole to have a centralized program. I believe it's Goodfellas on, I could be wrong, I think that's the business, that their program is something like a Call Angela, as opposed to like the angel shot thing, and that works really well. And so our Director of State and External Affairs is working really closely with that business to model what they're doing that's working well, and it'll hopefully make for a safer space as the year goes on. My administration's collaborating with Theodore Nohler's administration, a couple of other bodies on campus for our distinguished lectureship on equity this year that we're really excited about. We want that to have an arts focus and be an opportunity to bolster support for students who are non-STEM or business majors. And we talked to a lot of people, honestly, over the course of this week about how we want to do that. We were at the lectureship for Eve Carson, and I think it's Michelle Dorrance who is there. She's such an incredible talent out of Chapel Hill, and she has a real interest in getting involved with this event. So we're excited to connect with her and everyone else that we can to make this a great event for the general student body. I think last year's lectureship, there were many student leaders and administrators who were there, and you got to join the dinner and connect with the speaker one-on-one after. We have a real focus on making sure that any member of our general student body will be able to come in and connect with this really incredible talent that we can hopefully bring here for the lecture this year. Lastly, we had our ASG meeting, I think last week or the week before, it was at NC State this year, and that was a really incredible experience. I think there have been some issues in the past just with representation in that space, and a lot of people just came up to me and let me know they were so impressed by our team, representatives from my administration and our grad students and the legislative branch, so undergraduate senate as well. This was the first time that we all collaborated and had a full delegation from UNC in a really, really long time. And so we are just starting off on, I think, a perfect foot, and are gonna continue to represent ourselves well in that space, and to make sure that people know the flagship is here to lead. So thank you all for your time, and I would just end on saying that any council, resources, support that you all have, we really want to be able to connect with you for the betterment of our student body, and know that you're committed to doing the same. So thank you.
Thank you, President Van. This time I'll, I'll turn the platform over to the Chancellor for his remarks. Chancellor Guswitz?
Thanks, Chair Bullock. Thank you, President Van. And it's great to be with all of you, and there's a lot of incredible things happening here at Carolina at this magical place, as both Chair Bullock and Thomas Wolfe once said. I often call it a magical place, and it is. So it's always grateful to be here, to be able to share some of the great things that are happening here on campus. But we're not without challenges, and I just want to be clear, we are very, we talked earlier about campus safety concerns. The water, you know, the clean water is certainly important, we're working tirelessly on that as well as graduate student stipends. Provost Clemmons and I have been in conversations over the past two or three months on this, talked to Dean White, Jim White, just recent, last Friday, we could go today, about a strategy to help increase those graduate student stipends. So I just want to be clear that we're committed to taking on the challenges and, and making this the, you know, campus and community environment that we can all be proud of. But I do want to just share some of the great things that are happening. As always, and most importantly, we're here for our students. And we welcomed 5,400 new undergraduate students on August the 15th at a great convocation out at, over at the Smith Center. Also 3,600 new graduate students entered this year. It's not our, the largest incoming class of undergraduates or graduates that we've seen in our history, but it's close. It was the second largest undergraduate class and the third largest graduate class, incoming class. So while a lot of other universities are challenged by enrollment decline, we certainly are not experiencing that, and I think it's something that people, we have to keep reminding ourselves of. I've also enjoyed getting out to meet many of these students. It's been a great start to the fall semester, where last fall and the fall before, it was hard to get out on campus with some of the challenges, or get into the classroom environment where we were trying to, you know, we were still wearing masks and, you know, under some our COVID-19 standards. So it's been great to get out, to get to know these students, and it's a really special group. Just a little bit about this first-year class of undergraduates, and I know Rachel Feldman talked a bit about this yesterday, but 18% are first-generation college students. We represent 98 North Carolina counties, 49 states, and 86 different countries, and it is the, the most global, sort of international incoming class that, that we've had, and we're, we're proud of that. And so that's sort of who we are as, as the makeup of this student body, and I hope you'll get a chance to meet some of them as well. Second point, as Chair Bullock mentioned in his comments, we, again, have ranked very highly among our peers for the 27th consecutive year. We have ranked among the public, the top five publics, again, something we're proud of. But what really matters to me is the best value ranking. That's the one where we continue to be ranked first. I think it's 19 or 20 years in a row that we've ranked first in best value, and this really shows our excellence combined with affordability, something that, if you go back to our charter, the university's charter, we talk about the importance of that for the people of North Carolina. So I'm grateful to our faculty, staff, students, and this Board who remains committed to this, and also our Board of Governors, who is, is committed to the affordability component of, of that. I wrote an op-ed that was published last week that I know several of you reached out to me about and thanked me for doing, and I, I emphasized, and it was published in the Charlotte Observer and the Raleigh News &amp; Observer, and I emphasized that while it's nice to be consistently ranked among the best colleges and universities, it's, it's also impossible for any simplified ranking to account for all the incredible things and the, and the distinct missions of, at different universities. And I talked in there about the fact that we could bolster, probably bolster our U.S. News and World Report ranking by charging much higher tuition or rejecting far more of our applicants. We could put less emphasis on welcoming rural and first-generation students to redirect those resources away from public service, focusing more on the selectivity that U.S. News and World Report values in those rankings. But that wouldn't meet anyone's idea as best. And when I said that, I think we all agree that what, what is best for us and what's important to us, we're being proudly public is part of our DNA. So topping the charts is great, but not if it means compromising our core mission, and I, I think we're committed to staying true to that. Third, at our senior leadership retreat last month, we took time to prepare for the year ahead. We do this every August, it's usually the first or second week of August, and our strategic plan, Carolina Next: Innovations for Public Good, is helping to guide our decision-making. It has been for the past two years and will continue over the next two and a half to three years. And I heard from the Board that you felt that a more focused approach to some of those eight strategic initiatives would be wise, and I took that to our leadership team. And so this year, we really are focusing on three or four areas of those eight strategic initiatives. Promoting democracy, enabling career development for, for our students, our faculty, and our staff, and ensuring our status as a research and innovation powerhouse. That's our strategic initiative on discovery and on serving to benefit society. And, and so we, we had a, a full day where we were focused on, on these activities. In fact, I asked the, the leadership team to, to read Ron Daniels' book, What Universities Owe to Democracy. We had a great conversation around that, and I know that we've shared that book with members of the Board, and I'd look forward to continuing that conversation with you as well. But that's what we're focusing on now, you know, pushing our university forward on these critical aspects, preparing the next generation of leaders, that, the happiness of a rising generation, as I pulled out of our charter and talked about yesterday at the Kenan Flagler event, Ralph, Trustee Meekin said that he liked that and had not heard that, that sort of quote from our, taken, pulled from the, the charter. So I'm pleased with, with how our, our deans and other campus leaders are staying true to these priorities that we, together, collectively, have identified as being priorities. Just a couple highlights. So on democracy, we're following the Board's example from last summer, from this past summer, on promoting the importance of free speech on campus, and we heard about that yesterday. The Program for Public Discourse continues to be, one, as I sit next to Trustee Bryan, who was at the table long before he was a trustee here at the Carolina Inn, talking about the importance of a program for public discourse and the impact that it could have on our campus, and couldn't be happier with where we are on that. We'll have one of our Abby Speaker Series lectures, which we'll have in November, we'll have Tom Tillis and Cal Cunningham here, talking about, you know, talking and modeling how we can, can have discussions across difference, differences. And so we're excited to, to welcome Senator Tillis and Cal Cunningham in November. On career development, all undergraduates are starting, as you well know, our new Ideas in Action curriculum, new gen ed curriculum that's been developed over the past three to four years, and we're preparing them for careers that don't even exist yet, for critical experiential education opportunities, internships, research opportunities, and study abroad that we know is critical to moving, to moving them forward. I want to say just a little bit about research. You know, we're, we're working to find solutions to the world's greatest challenges and problems, fulfilling our critical mission to serve our state. $1.2 billion in, in research that, that we brought in last year. It's serving our state, it's serving the, the nation, and serving the world. But I tell people, it's not just the $1.2 billion, but it's the impact of those dollars that really is important. On University Day, on October the 12th, we'll focus on one of those problems, water, and the ways in which we're working collaboratively to solve challenges around, around water. And our researchers will share their work around this important theme for, for the future of our state. We'll have undergraduates, we're gonna focus the importance of undergraduate research alongside their world-class faculty mentors that, that are working with them. And just a week later, on October the 19th, we will launch the Tar Heel Bus Tour, giving our faculty, new deans and administrators, the opportunity to witness the work that we're doing in partnerships across the state of North Carolina, in communities and towns that are, that our students call home, and it's great to be bringing this back after we've had to take a two-year pause from the Tar Heel Bus Tour that we relaunched in 2019. Finally, as we've discussed at the past several Board meetings, we must be focused on our campus infrastructure and capital projects that really need our attention. I know this is important to Chair Bullock, we have talked endlessly about the importance of this, I know you're committed to it. My theme for this year, as we've been talking about this, is that we, regardless of the challenge or the issue, we're built for this. This is a university that's soon to be 229 years old, and we're built for this. We're built to tackle the biggest challenges of our, of our time, but we also need to actually build to be built for this. And so to build new buildings, to fix old buildings, and to provide our community with the facilities that they need to do their work. I've said often, and I said it last night at the FedEx Global Education Center, that our people is what makes us shine. It's what makes us proud, it's the people. But the buildings, the facilities, and the campus infrastructure make a difference. State-of-the-art buildings and facilities help attract talented people to this campus and allows us to optimize that talent. and allows us to optimize that talent once they're here. And so this has got to be a top priority for us. We fund projects in many different ways. We're grateful for the funding that was approved in the 2021 legislative session, which represents a significant commitment far beyond what we've received over the past six or seven years. And so we're really going to put that R and R funding to good use through the help of this board, our facilities team, Nate Knufman, and our finance team, and hearing from our deans about what, where their challenges are. Additionally, though, we, the university, as you know, we also invest through our own funding in a lot, taking care of a lot of these needs from various sources to address pressing needs. $40 million is an example to renovate the Morehead Chemistry HVAC system. When we didn't have money to cover that through state appropriation, you know, Nate and his team found a way to make that happen. $40 million. We're working on a comprehensive renovation of Bingham Hall on funding that we have pulled together outside of what's been brought to us from the General Assembly. The university funding was also provided to refurbish 50 general-purpose classrooms and convert Carroll Hall 111, which was going to be part of the tour that we were going to do today, but because of the weather, we're going to push it to the November meeting to go on a tour, to look at these facilities and see the impact that those dollars can have. But we converted in Carroll Hall a fixed-seat auditorium to an active learning classroom in part by a gift received from the Knight Foundation. We saw yesterday what can happen when we leverage private funding with a match from the state. It was a really special day, as was already mentioned by Chair Bolick, at the Keenan Flagler Business School groundbreaking for the new Stephen D. Bell Hall. It was important to celebrate that yesterday because of what this will mean in the end. It's an opportunity to double the enrollment in our undergraduate business school over the next three to four years and bring even greater talent to Keenan Flagler, to the Keenan Flagler Business School. We heard from Jamie Diamond, arguably, probably the most powerful banker, if you will, as the CEO of JP Morgan Chase, there for a fireside chat with one of our amazing MBA students. And so we bring great talent here that inspires our students. So we're grateful to our legislature and donors like Steve Bell and many others for their support of this important project. And then finally, last evening, we celebrated the 15-year anniversary of the FedEx Global Education Center. It was built in 2007, and it was a game changer for this campus. It was at that point that we began talking about Carolina as a leading, global, public research university and underscoring the global part of that. We had been talking for years about, we're passionately public, we're the first of the publics, the research trajectory we were on at that time, but it was the global piece that that building allowed us really to deliver on. We celebrated with a powerful lecture by FedEx founder and executive CEO Fred Smith on how he built a global company for the modern world. And it was followed by a fireside chat with our own Vice Provost for Global Affairs, Ambassador Barbara Stevenson, who, she could be Oprah Winfrey. She was really good up there entertaining the audience alongside Fred Smith, something that every Carolina student needed to see, and many did. It was a really special evening. So starting the day with Jamie Diamond at the Keenan Flagler Business groundbreaking and ending the day with Fred Smith at our FedEx Global Education Center, combined with the important work of this board in between, made for a very special day at Carolina. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work alongside you to move this university forward on many of these capital projects, but also staying true to our strategic plan, Carolina Next. And I think there's a lot of great things ahead. So that concludes my comments, but I want to take an opportunity, as we've been doing at this meeting over the past three or four months, and that is to introduce a few new deans. We have a few more, two new deans and a new Vice Chancellor that I'm going to bring to the podium for a brief introduction today. I'm going to introduce Val Howard, our Dean of the School of Nursing, Stan Ahal, the Dean of the School of Data Science and Society, and Cameron Farwell, who's, I think Cameron's in day five, maybe, four or five? And she's our new Vice Chancellor for Communications. And I'd love each of you to come up to the podium, say a few words, introduce yourself. And I'm going to turn it back over to Chair Bolick for our committee reports. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, trustees, for giving us this opportunity to introduce ourselves. I am Valerie Howard, the new Dean of the School of Nursing, came from that other university down the street, and prior to that spent a career in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where I served as a Dean of a School of Nursing and Health Sciences. I am thrilled to be here at Carolina. What attracted me here, certainly the opportunity to fulfill the mission related to teaching, wonderful programs, wonderful students, wonderful faculty, the research mission, highly ranked, highly regarded, the practice mission, being able to partner with UNC Health and our communities to make a difference in North Carolina related to healthcare. But it really was the mission, the mission of this university that resonated with me, and that is to really give back to the state of North Carolina, not just in Chapel Hill, but all across the state. So our mission in the school is that we are distinctly empowered to advance health for all, and I truly believe that. We are facing a terrible nursing shortage, not just in North Carolina, but across the nation. And we know that North Carolina is in either the top five, the top 10, not a top 10 that we want to be in, but we are here to make a difference. And how are we going to make a difference? I want to first thank everyone here for the generosity and the support of our new facility, the Carrington Hall renovations. Many thanks to the legislature of North Carolina. We will use this facility to prepare the next generation of nurses and help to meet that tremendous nursing shortage here in North Carolina. But more importantly, what does that building represent? As the Chancellor mentioned, it's not the building that does the work. It really is the people that we are going to be attract, to be able to attract because of that building. And the meaning of that building and the dedication to us means that we are firmly dedicated to improving health outcomes in North Carolina. So I want to thank you for this tremendous opportunity. I am honored to serve.
Thank you, Chancellor, Chair Bolick, and members of the board. I am very pleased to be here with you at the right place and the right time for the new School of Data Science and Society. You might ask, why is this the right place and the right time? Because the demand from students and from employers is incredibly strong, because data is becoming the critical factor in our science and our arts and our society, and because UNC Chapel Hill has incredible faculty, staff, and students. And we are poised to shape this field and the impacts the field will reap. Our vision for the school is very simple, to serve the state of North Carolina by focusing on our students, by focusing on building the workforce that North Carolina needs, and by training the next generation of exemplary data, data science scholars. I was utterly thrilled to be given this chance to serve as the inaugural Dean of the School of Data Science and Society, and I mean that. We are busy building now the online Masters of Data Science, and that applied program will be available and up and running next year. And we'll be developing other degree programs rapidly, and we are working as hard as we can. So we're hearing from eager and excited students from across campus that can't wait to be part of this new school, and other disciplines have reached out with an incredible encouragement to all of us. So this campus has been welcoming to this new school. So I just want to say I sincerely thank you all for your continued support for the School of Data Science and Society.
I have to move this down a little. As the Chancellor said, I'm Cameron Farwell. I'm your new Vice Chancellor of Communications, and I am on my fifth day. And so we are just getting started, and there is chaos still at my house, all boxes all around. But, and I didn't plan to start on Board Week, but actually, this has been a great opportunity to learn about so many different aspects of the university and to see all of you in action and give faces to names. There are so many people to meet and things to learn, and, but I already have a Carolina game under my belt. The Chair Bolick contacted me on Saturday, and he said, you know, some of us have been talking, and you don't start until Monday, but that means you're in town on Saturday. And we thought you could come to the game. And I was more than happy to drop the boxes, put on some Carolina blue, and go to the game. So I hope I wasn't a jinx. We'll find out tomorrow. I'm honored to get to help tell the story of UNC at this exciting time in its history. Many people have asked me what drew me here from University of Missouri, where I served in the same position. And I had a lot of responsibility and support and relationships across campus. I came for the excellence of this institution and the people who work here. I get the opportunity to learn about all the most important things happening on campus, and I get to have direct contact with those people and then tell the world about that work, and that's an exciting opportunity. Once I met Chancellor Guskowitz and members of the leadership team and the communicators on my team and other stakeholders throughout the interviews, I was very excited to join this community. So I've had the warmest of welcomes so far this week, the last few days, and I'm anxious to dig in. And my first step is to learn as much as I possibly can about this university and the state it serves and to get to know all of you much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor, and Dean Howard and Dean Ahal. Thank you. I enjoyed spending time with all three of you over the last week, and I know you've got great things to add to our community. Thanks. All right, well, let's move on, because I like to move things along. I'm actually ahead of schedule, Mr. Vice Chair. And since it should be fresh on your mind, I'm going to ask Trustee Codas to give us just a quick report for the record on the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee. Trustee Codas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee of Audit Compliance and Risk Management earlier this morning. The committee reviewed and approved its certification letter for fiscal year 2022, which was approved by this board as part of the consent agenda this morning. Committee also heard a campus safety update from Chief Ryan James, an update on the Institutional Science and Security Program from Joy Bride, and an update from Dean Weber on the university's internal audit, self-assessment, and maturity model report and annual report, as well as other risk management items discussed in closed session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Chair Codas. And this time I'd call on the Vice Chair of the Board and Chair of the Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure Committee, John Pryor, for a report. Trustee Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure yesterday. The committee reviewed and approved one designer selection, one site approval, and one request for spending authority, all of which were approved by the board as part of the consent agenda this morning. Committee also heard an update from John King, CEO of the UNC Management Company, regarding the UNC Investment Fund's fiscal year 2022 performance, as well as a development update from Vice Chancellor Ruth, and a finance update from Vice Chancellor Knufman. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pryor. Now I'd call on Trustee Perrin Jones, Dr. Jones, for a report on the activities of the Strategic Initiatives Committee. I know there was a lot of work that's hand in glove with the Chancellor's remarks today about workforce development. Look forward to your report. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives yesterday. During our meeting, the committee received a presentation from university faculty and staff regarding career services programs on campus. The committee also approved a resolution supporting the Chancellor's creation of a work group to seek input and present recommendations to assist in the design and expansion of student career services and life skills programs on campus. The board approved this resolution as part of the consent agenda this morning. Our committee also welcomed Provost Clemens to our meeting to introduce us to several collaborative leaders on campus, as well as to provide an update on academic freedom on campus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And let me just reiterate and thank board members for their leadership as Chairs and Vice Chairs of Committees and the work. I think, I think yesterday and this morning, all of the committee work was, was very productive and went smooth. So I just appreciate all of your leadership and willing to serve in that capacity. At this time, I would entertain a motion from Secretary Turner to go into closed session. We will, we've got some closed session reports that we need to obtain from the External Relations Committee and the University Affairs Committee, and then we'll, after, after the closed session, we'll reconvene in open session. Secretary Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143-318.11A2, A3, A5, A6, and A7.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to go into closed session. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I will remind the public and all those present that we, we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes primarily to discuss personnel matters and other sensitive matters that relate sometimes to fundraising and naming and, and things of those nature that are not ripe for public disclosure. But we do eventually disclose every single item in public, and at the end of closed session, those items that are, that are pertinent for public disclosure will be disclosed. Are we back up online? Thank you. Okay, let me know when we're back up online, and we'll move forward quickly so people can get on the road. And I will tell you, Mr. Vice Chair, we're ahead of schedule by an hour.
Well done.
Yeah, I think that was good. The Board of Trustees back in open session. I'm going to call on Chair of the University Affairs Committee, Rob Bryan, for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chair Bolick, and fellow trustees. This report covers items discussed yesterday during the meeting of the Committee on University Affairs. We, the committee considered and approved a resolution authorizing the use of the Senior Administrative Officers Retirement Program for Tier One Senior Administrative Officers, as well as revisions to the EHRA policy on non-salary and deferred compensation. It also approved a resolution authorizing development of a bonus program for EHRA employees, as well as a request for revised salary ranges for the School of Nursing facility. All four of those items were approved by the board as a part of the consent agenda earlier this morning. Committee also heard updates from Dr. Remy Chapman, Chair of the Faculty, Theodore Nolte, Graduate Student Body President, Katie Musgrove, Chair of the Employee Forum, and from Vice Provost, Rachel Feldman. In closed session, we discussed requested personnel action items, including four promotions, conferring tenure, six new appointments, conferring tenure, and two non-salary faculty compensation actions. These items require our vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including four promotions, conferring tenure, six new appointments, conferring tenure, and two non-salary faculty compensation actions.
I have that as a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second from Trustee Artis Neal.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. I'm going to, Mr. McCullin had to hit the road to get home with the pending storm, and Trustee White also had to get home, but we still do have a quorum, so I'll call, Jean Davis, Trustee Davis?
Thank you for dragging the bottom of the barrel, Chairman.
Trustee Davis has agreed to take over. Trustee Davis?
On behalf of Committee Chair McCullin, I'm honored to have an opportunity to present the report of the Committee on External Relations. Chair Bolick, Board Trustees members, this report covers items discussed during yesterday's open session meeting of the Committee on External Relations. In open session, the committee heard a legislative update from Amy McConkey, Director of State Affairs, and Kelly Dockum, Director of Legislative Affairs. The committee also welcomed Brian Marley, Chair of the UNC Board of Visitors, to present an update from the Board of Visitors. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes my remarks. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion from trustee Davis to adjourn. I have a second from Vice Chair Pryor. All those in favor, say aye, aye. Okay, we we stand adjourned. Thank you.